How are you, sir?
I'm starting advertising. Yeah. So, that'll be fine. But a lot of my musings and stuff.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, thank you for the study you've given us. Lord, as we get off this business, discuss the knowledge and wisdom we need to make our decisions. Be with us throughout this week, Lord. Help us live like you, your will is, Lord. May others see you, see you through us, Lord. Give us our sins, Christ on our prayer.
We're in hand, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, and a God, indivisible, without any injustice. One Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, thank you. At this time, any person in the business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court if formal action could be taken on these appointments. Please, speaker will be limited to three minutes. Ms. Summers?
Hi, just, of course, I've been here a few months. I just wanted to bring the court for actually signing and dating the rules of procedure page. That compels me to sign and date the form that I need to fill out to speak. Thank you.
All right, court to discuss and consider precinct project. And fun with that?
Thank you. Didn't have much fun, but it's good.
Good, good. Okay, I talked to Carrie about the millings for the trails. Same place, Roscoe, that y'all picked the others up. You can get them at any time, and there's 2,000 tons for us. Lance has worked the area over. He's made paths so y'all can get in and out, scraping the trucks with trees. And he's got a nice flat area to, and wide area that y'all don't come back in there. Need to see where that is.
We're still not able to just lay them down as we bring it in.
The grant's not, they can't do it yet.
Haven't started yet? When does it start?
Waiting on their word.
Yeah, we're waiting for the final approval.
That would be the most optimal thing to do, rather than filing it.
Right, because they're going to be all done.
If, if it stays there very long in the heat, it'll be just like brick.
Okay.
Concrete. So, that's something we want to consider.
I'm just letting you know they're there, ready wherever y'all are.
I'm on my way to get them. She didn't give you a timeframe?
She said that they are there. They're going to do the same thing out there.
Well, we've submitted all of the rest of the documentation that they needed for that grant, so we're just waiting on them to finalize everything and do whatever final stuff. So, once we get the approval, then we can move forward with doing that, I think.
Should be anytime.
Because then we can count it in the non-federal share part of it.
I wonder if it would help if we called and let them know the situation, and maybe they even can move in quicker.
The state, no.
You said 2,000 tons?
Yes.
Of the 100, roughly 100 truckload. But 20 tons basically, it's probably a big load.
So, that area, that perimeter will need to be bladed off at some point before we start laying those down?
But there's no use blading until we know that we can actually pick them up. Or it's just going to grow back up. Unless it continues to be a trial.
Oh, it will continue.
Which we're afraid.
That's true.
That's true.
Also, on the other grant, the road grant, if y'all have any March project sheets, make sure to turn those in quickly so I can go ahead and get them approved and submitted for them on the March, because they are doing things on time through the seeders grant now. They're processing as soon as I send them in.
Okay, anything else? All right, court discusses received bid depository, bank depository bids, not bid depository bids. Thank you. He's got a knife.
So, I guess if you work here, they'll let you keep your mouth and bring it in. I had to check mine at the door.
Just let her open it.
So, we have two. One from First Banking Trust and one from West Texas State Bank. Kirsty, how would you like to do this?
Um, I would like to look over them and reconvene on the 11th to make the decision.
Okay. That way, we're not making a snap decision.
Mm-hmm. And that way Angela and I can review them all without having to rush.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, y'all okay with that?
You bet.
All right. Good. Thank you, I appreciate you coming. And we'll do that on the 11th. So, one week from today, we'll, our rule again.
I'll see y'all next week.
All right. See y'all next week. Court to discuss and consider approval of Connolly and Company's 2022 engagement letter. You're right, he does.
It's the same thing as every year or two, have them do our annual audit outside child abuse. And we need it signed.
We need it signed, yes, ma'am. Say it. All in favor? Did I put the correct year on that? If I did?
No.
I got to think about that. That's the first time I've done that, and it's April.
You take a slide there.
I know, I can't say it anymore.
Thank you.
Court to discuss and consider certification of additional revenues in the form of funds received from Texas Treasury opioid settlement. This has been, what, two years?
Um, well, from what I'm understanding, they're going to slowly trickle out this, the funds that we won in the settlement. So, our amount is supposed to be about 75,000 or so, and this is our first portion of that. So, since it's been two years, I don't know when we'll get the remainder. But it's 22,952.66. I did have to create a separate revenue line, so it's called opioid settlement revenue, just to be able to track it. And there's a lot of questions about regarding whether tracking of what it has to, is, when it's been on. Some people say there's no limitations, others say there is limitations. So, we're still checking in all of that, but we did receive.
No, 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 that's not the motion here. For a little bit, sorry.
All in favor? All right. Uh, court to consider the resignation of Norma Martinez, Scory County Justice of the Peace Precinct 1. I didn't get the exact years that Norma's been with Scory County, but it's over 30 and in multiple capacities, and she's done us a good job. So, she's saying that her resignation would be effective April 30th.
We can hear two for the other banking.
Say it. All in favor? Uh, court to consider the resignation of Norma Martinez, Scory County Justice of the Peace Precinct 1. I didn't get the exact years that Norma's been with Scory County, but it's over 30 and in multiple capacities, and she's done us a good job. So, she's saying that her resignation would be effective April 30th.
We can hear two for the other banking.
Say it. All in favor? We thank Norma for her service to Scory County. Court to consider occurring April Child Abuse Awareness Month, and we have visitors.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing well.
Good. We're from the West Texas Children's Advocacy Center. I'm Nikki Fuentes, I'm the family advocate. This is Carrington Harris, she is our main interviewer. And so, we're just here to ask that you guys proclaim April as Child Abuse Awareness Month. Cases have gone up tremendously since last year. And even in town, as of just last month alone, we did 33, and we was higher. And most of them were sexual abuse, and that's a record number for Scory County. It's the most obscene and epic of five years. So, last month was, was a rough one for us, so it's definitely out there, so. And I'll go ahead and give me to read this for you.
Sure.
Okay. Says whereas more than 67,000 cases of child abuse and neglect were confirmed in Texas during 2022, and whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solutions depends on involvement among all people, and whereas effective child abuse intervention programs succeed because of partnerships among a variety of entities, including but not limited to schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, child protective services, prosecution agencies, medical professionals, mental health professionals, children's advocacy centers, and other community-based nonprofit organizations, and whereas everyone in the community should become more aware of child abuse prevention and consider helping parents raise their children in a safe nurturing environment, as well as supporting local professionals dedicated to meeting the needs of child abuse victims. Therefore, the Scory County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Awareness Month in Scory County and encourage all citizens to work together to reduce child abuse and neglect, and to significantly improve the response of our community when child abuse occurs in the months and years ahead.
Okay, well, I, I, this is very important. I'll make the motion to declare April Child Abuse Awareness Month.
Clear.
Okay. Thank you for everything that y'all do for them.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Do we need to sign any of these? This one?
I think you can just.
We're becoming.
Just mine, but I need, you need one sign?
Yeah, listen, go ahead. And then if we can sneak in a picture.
Just a second, I get a picture.
Yes, yeah, let me move on one.
And then we'll get it located. If you'll take a moment, I think it's.
We're going to have to squeeze in.
All right.
Oh, do you probably have to move picture?
Let me wait for the picture. All right. One, two, three. All right, and Kirsty, we have that. I'm going to put on your heart.
Here we go.
Thank you. All right. One, two, three. You have your name written?
I have.
That's okay.
That smile, that smile you got.
It's the only one I've got. It's the only one I've got. I don't know what to say.
Blessing of the earth.
All right, court to discuss and consider adjustments to the current event standby rate for the emergency medical services. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, very much, I appreciate it.
Every time you do it, you need a copy, don't you?
Yes, please. Perfect, thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you for letting me talk.
Absolutely.
Yeah, appreciate you.
This one?
All right, court to discuss and consider adjustments to the current event standby rate for the emergency medical services. Jason reached out to me and said that their current rates for standbys, this would be at games and events, is the first four hours is $250 and $50 every hour after that. He's recommending a $300 for the first four hours and 75 after four hours. Cost of inflation and everything that is.
It replaces money from each sector.
Yes.
So, make the motion that there are fees for standby for emergency medical services.
All in favor? All right, thank you. Court to discuss and consider submitted plat for potential purchase of interest in Cross Trails Energy Storage Project. This is the battery out east of town, the kinetic battery. There is someone interested in purchasing part of it, and they have done a carve-out, and they've submitted the plat of that carve-out. So, they're requesting to have us approve the plat.
There's some bigger ones. I just need one.
Yeah, I need to look at it.
Be able to look at it a little better, we'll try to.
Do you want to? No, I'm good, thank you. Doesn't affect anything else that's going on out there, just some part of it.
Please don't bother with it.
Uh, the Cross Trail is original. The original, yes.
I have a question.
Okay.
Is there a tax abatement involved with this?
Not in this, no. They're just asking for a replat, basically, subdividing it out.
So, they didn't buy all of it?
No, they didn't buy the whole thing.
And mikes, you might just look at it, is it something we can do?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we allow for the purchase of, or not the purchase, rather replat, replat. Cross Trails Energy.
All in favor?
There is a fee to record this in the plat records, so.
I will mention a word now. Would you let me know with the?
I will, I'll have to get it.
All right, court to consider posting job vacancy for Scory County Justice of the Peace Precinct 1 timeline for the receipt of applications there. Uh, all right, so at the beginning, I handed you a justice peace precinct one job description. And that is straight out of the law, with qualifications, duties included, and requirements. I did add one thing in the duties, subject to call out 24 hours a day, seven days a week. People will know that, because doing inquest, it's 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I left the applications must be received no later than April blank of 2023, and put interviews will occur on May 2nd. I know that she's leaving April 30th, but our timeline is that we meet next week on the 11th, we meet on the 18th. We don't have a quorum on the 25th, so May 2nd will be the soonest that we would be able to conduct interviews, I believe, unless you wanted to do a rush job and do it on the 18th.
We don't have to resign.
Uh-huh. So, and.
In the future, I would just like to make the court aware of that Norma's still responsibility, responsible for the duties of that office, even though she has resigned. So, I mean, just in the future.
Yeah, she'll be considered a holdover at that point, and any duties can be assigned to her specifically for her office. And there, other than other duties that JP has to do, the duties in the office can be done by her duty clerk. Judge Webb and I are going to cover the other areas, the magistrations, inquests, and things like that in the court proceedings that may be done in the meantime. But you're absolutely right.
Well, I just, we might want to, you know, in the future, consider doing these in a more timely manner whenever somebody resigns, so.
So, the interviews will be May 2nd?
That hadn't been decided yet, that's what I'm proposing. Ms. Summers?
She's talking about doing this in a timely manner. What day did you receive her resignation letter?
We received it. What's the date?
March 27th.
And that was after our last meeting, and we have to accept it at Commissioners Court meeting before anything can proceed from there.
March 27th? I agree.
So, in, in there, also added register vote in the precinct, which is voting, voting boxes are voted precincts 7, 8, 12, and 15, and I've asked people to check their voter registration card, you also have to be a registered voter in those precincts, but.
You said I want my quorum on April 23rd.
No, sir. Gosh, I am so. It's the mustache.
Really?
I apologize. No, sir.
I was just wondering about. Go ahead. To have inter.
Yes. That's what I was wondering, I was, I was thinking the 18th. Let me look at the calendar. I was thinking that would give us, if we.
Two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, a little over that.
Exactly, if it's 18th, they scored.
Or we could call it the 21st, give them till that Friday. That would give us a little over a week to look at any applications and ask them any questions that you might have, whatever the applications are. What's that Friday? What is that? That Friday's the 21st. 18th is the Tuesday, and we have Commissioners Court. And then the final week there, at least three of us that will not be here.
It's the primary on the other. But it's my opinion, you don't want to resign.
All right.
I think everybody just double up and down, I don't want to do that.
Do you want to do interviews on May 2nd?
I want to get the applications to go on the 4th, the 23rd.
We can get the applications and get them out there.
Do you listen to the email?
Sorry. 23rd and May 2nd.
Maybe you can get a hand. Can I look them up?
All right. This is my question. Okay. All in favor? All right, so applications must be received no later than April 21st, and interviews will occur on May 2nd. And we'll get this posted pretty quick. And get you one, I'll get you one that is.
So, if somebody asks, is it 10:00, 10:00 AM, May 2nd, it's like?
It'll be, yeah, it'll be at the Commissioners Court. 10:00 AM.
If they apply, all interviewees need to be here on May 2nd. All applications.
Might as well look at everybody. All right, court discussing United States Gibson Company settlement agreement and release. So, as y'all know, we have the, thank you for coming, we appreciate you.
Right. Reggie. Sorry, she needed her. Thank you. I know, I can say I'm.
So, as you know, we were part of the US Gibson lawsuit for tires that were dumped, or?
Precinct. Two, but when it was two Commissioners.
Right, they weren't dumped, they were picked up, so hired, someone was hired to pick up the tires, they didn't have a license, they illegally dumped them. That hadn't been decided yet, that's what I, I was, Ms. Summers?
She's talking about doing this in a timely manner. What day did you receive her resignation letter?
We received it. What's the date?
March 27th.
And that was after our last meeting, and we have to accept it at Commissioners Court meeting before anything can proceed from there.
March 27th?
So in, in there, also added registered voter precinct, which is voting, voting votes is a voting precinct, 7, 8, 12, and 15. And, uh, I've asked people to check their voter registration card, y'all have to be a registered voter in those precincts, so. No, sir. Gosh, I mean, it's the mustache. I apologize. No, sir. Interview?
Yes.
That's what I was wondering, I was, I was thinking the 18th. Let me look at the calendar. I was thinking that would give us, if we. Yeah, yeah, a little over that.
Exactly, because it's 18th, day four.
Or we could call it the 21st, give them till that Friday. That would give us a little over a week to look at any applications and ask them any questions that you might have. Wherever the applicants are.
What's that, right? What is that?
That Friday is the 21st. 18th is the Tuesday that we have Commissioners Court. And then the final week there, at least three of us, they will not be here. Two, get applications.
Be covered in by, yes. With that, it's not being, you don't want a res. I think everybody just dug it up and down, I don't want to do that.
Do you want to do interviews on May 2nd?
I don't know, I want to get the applications that we're on the 4th, the 23rd.
We can get the applications and get them out.
Do you have this thing in the DM? Sorry.
23rd and May 2nd. All in favor? Just any lead left, yeah? All right, so applications must be received no later than April 21st, and interviews will occur on May 2nd. And we'll get this posted pretty quick. And get you one, I'll get you one that is.
So if somebody asks, is it 10 a, 10 a.m. May 2nd, it's like?
It'll be, yeah, it'll be at Commissioners Court.
If they apply, all interviewees need to be here on May 2nd. All, all applications.
Might as well look at everybody. All right, court to discuss and United States Gibson Company settlement agreement and release. So as y'all know, we have the, thank you, Brooke, I'm Ricky, appreciate you.
Ricky. Sorry, she needed her.
Thank you.
So as you know, we were part of the US Gibson lawsuit for tires that were dumped for.
Precinct, um.
Two.
Two, but when it was two Commissioners.
Right, they weren't dumped, they were picked up, so hired, someone was hired to pick up the tires. They didn't have a license, they illegally dumped them in sweet water on US Gibson's company's property. They sued everyone involved, everyone they could find a, a invoice for. We had one invoice for $1,250, I think it was. We turned it into TAC, they have, they believe in a settlement agreement. This is not something that we need to discuss because the attorneys have, or our insurance has determined that it should be settled. The settlement amount is $10,502.44, plus attorney.
We paid a thousand for the deductible.
Yeah.
And it's done.
Yeah.
It's no longer in the lawsuit.
Right. No need to approve it, it's just.
Yeah, it's just a dispassment to let on.
Just passing the information on to you. So that is over and done with at this point. Hey, did you get any line out of French person that you can email?
No.
All right. Counts payable.
Counts payable is $1,368,454.37.
All in favor? Make a motion, will you, Jim?
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you, everybody, appreciate y'all.